I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavill.
Here.
Mr. Kramer. Mr. Dombrowski. Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. LaFever.
Here. Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a suggested motion that the board will enter closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Ms. I'm sorry, Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
The suggested motion that the board return to open session, can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye, we're here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Abstain.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye. All right, our first item of business is public comments. According to Phase Four Guidelines issued by the State of Illinois, no more than 50 individuals may be gathered together in a specific location at one time. The Board of Education meeting is being held this evening in the auditorium at Hoffman Estates High School with a maximum of 50 individuals. The board meeting also will be simulcast in classrooms near the auditorium to accommodate any additional guests beyond the auditorium capacity. The Board of Education meeting is also being conducted via an electronic video conferencing application known as Zoom. Tonight, public comments will be in person and via Zoom. Individuals who wanted to address the board via in-person or Zoom were asked to sign up today between the hours of 4:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. Individuals were asked to indicate if they wanted to address the Board of Education in person or via Zoom. No one has signed up via Zoom or by any other means. Is there anybody here in the auditorium that did not get a chance to sign up that would like to address the Board of Education? If so, if you could just raise your hand and wave to me. Very good, thanks. No one is here for public comments. With that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. We have our Equity and Educational Imperative presentation. Dr. Small, would you like to make any introductions, please?
I would. We have from the Illinois Association of School Boards, two of our Directors of Field Services, Dee Molinari and Sandra Quassa. Thank you for being here tonight, and they will be leading us in our training that we're having.
Great, thank you.
It's awesome. Okay. Well, thank you all so much for joining us today. We are so delighted to be here with you all. And before we start, what I'd like for you to do is if you open up your packet, you should see a one-page document titled Cultural Responsiveness for Equity Success. And what I'd like for you to do at this point is just to kind of focus it. It's an assessment of where you are on your own personal journey. So if you would just take a few moments to go through this, and then we'll talk about a little bit later. And then later on, we'll also be assessing your role in the management team. Okay, while we're completing, I see some of these still writing. Obviously, you have to be writing. This is typically a three-hour workshop. So that would take us to probably about a minute, but I mean, we're flexible. It's very flexible. As far as breaks, when you need a break, let us know. Two buttons, continue all night. Okay? Oh, I don't know. So we are some naturally, if someone needs a moment, just say, "Okay, good times." Is that okay? Now, it's kind of hard to see the faces and all that. And a few of you have been in workshops with me, I think, Anna Lee, and Stephen. I like a lot of feedbacks, or you all can just do something, let's, you know. Okay?
Okay.
Am I loud enough?
Yes.
Am I loud enough for the whatever screaming and...
I'm sorry, I need a little bit louder.
I'll be a little bit louder.
Yeah. And... Must I? Must I?
I must. Okay, then he says, "I must." Okay, so I must. If he says, "I must," I must. Okay, we're flexible, we're adaptable. Is that a little bit better?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
See, I've never been told I don't speak loud enough, so this is very interesting for me. So thank you very much. If you could silence your phones, if you need to move up around, that's okay. And as long as we stay within our six feet of each other, I think we'll be okay. If I tend to invade your space, let me know, because I am a mover. I like to move, but I'm going to try to stay in my little bubble right now as we proceed. Okay, you've got a folder. Everybody has a folder. You should have a participant manual in that folder. If you could take out your participant manual, you've just completed the assessment, thank you. And I think those are the two items that should be in the folder at this point, and those are the only two items we will need to proceed. How is it going with you all? Are you all with me, or are you advancing as I'm advancing?
So the PowerPoint is on everybody's desktop for you to see. What might be helpful is if you tell us what screen you're on by the number. We can see those numbers also.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, right now, we are on the slide that says presenters. Are you with me? Say yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And what you will see is on the presenters, it says Be Young Associates. Well, what is that? Be Young Associates, how many of you are familiar with Be Young? Has anybody had an opportunity to meet Be Young? Okay, Be Young Associates is basically an organization that is their educational consultants, and they've been doing this for probably about 60 years, 60-plus years. And that's Be Young, actually, has been involved in this work. And so, we consulted with her when our membership said, "Wait a minute, we need to have some equity training." We consulted with her, and she helped create the workshop that you are going to be joining with us today. Now, what is this workshop based on? Be Young captured very, very beautifully in this book called Restoring the Soul to Education. It was a journey of two Illinois districts that wanted to close the achievement gap in their districts. And so, their journey was captured in this particular book. And she wrote it down, and basically, that's what this workshop is based on. It is also co-authored by our state superintendent, Dr. Carmen Ayala, and Mr. Michael Kilgore. So that's basically what this is based on, this particular workshop. And we're really excited about it. And if you're interested in the book, you can come and just kind of look at it and see if you'd like to. And one of the districts was Dr. Ayala's district, too. It's a suburban, one of the suburban Chicago districts as well. Any questions on that? And at any point, if you want to stop me and say, "Oh, I'm just going to..." So what happened was, back in June of 2019, we piloted this workshop, and it was pretty successful. And then we decided to premiere it at the Joint Annual Conference. And several people were there, about 90 people in the room, and several people signed up for the workshop, and we were all excited about it, and of course, COVID hit. So we have actually done this workshop for the first time. We did it in July of this year, and we're constantly, as our schedules allow, are actually facilitating this in workshops all around the, actually, all around the state, but we've actually talked to some of our peer in different states about the workshop as well. It's been fun, it's been interesting. One of the things that we've learned is that every district is different. And whatever our experience was in the last district, we just erase it all now, and we're starting afresh with 211. And that's our experience. Okay, what we'd like to do now is to just kind of do a little initial introduction. So if you would, please turn to the next slide, and it should say Initial Introductions. It's Slide Four. Do you notice on the right side of each slide, it says PM Five? So if you, PM is the participant manual, and if you open up your participant manual to page five, it will mirror what you see on Slide Four. So at any point, you should know exactly where we are, either in the book or on the slide, whichever is your preference. So what we'd like to do is some initial introductions. Anytime we ask you to do something, Dee and I will first demonstrate. And the initial introductions are pretty simple. For you all, it's obviously your name, and then we know the school district, and how many years you've been on the board would be nice. But the key to this exercise is one word others might use to describe you. One word others might use to describe you. Not that you would use to describe yourself, but others might use to describe you. Make sense?
I'm sorry, before, are these ours to keep?
Absolutely.
So we can write in these?
Yes, yes. Write, destroy them, whatever you'd like to do. Okay? So let's go on and start those initial introductions. Dee, why don't you stand with me? And, yes, grab your mic. I'll start off. I'm Sandra Quassa. I've been with the Illinois Association of School Board for 15 years now. And one word, in the Lombard office, by the way, and one word others might use to describe me is over thinker. That's a hyphenated word, you know. Okay?
Is that cheating?
It's sort of kind of, it doesn't...
Dee Molinari, I've been with the association for three years out of the Lombard office. One word that others would use to describe me would be giving.
Good, thank you. So we'd like to start with you all. Who would like to start?
My name's Kim Cavill. I was, I've only been on the board for a year and a half, and a word that others might use to describe me would be frank.
Frank, great, thank you. Thank you for volunteering to be first. Steve, can we go to you, Steven?
Sure. Steve Rosenbloom. I've been on the board for three years, and a word that others would use to describe me is helpful.
Helpful, thank you, thank you. Edward?
Yeah, my name is Ed Young. I've been on the board, actually, I've been on another board for eight years, and this board for seven years, so total 15 years' services. And I guess people would describe me as being friendly.
Friendly, okay, thank you. I want to say Dr. Small, but Lisa, okay?
Thank you. Lisa Smalls is my first-year superintendent, my 29th year in the district, and I think people might describe me as a go-getter.
Go-getter, okay. Take another one of those sort of hyphenated sort of kind of words. Okay, Rob?
Bob LaFever, 15 years on the board, and disciplined.
Disciplined. Anna?
Anna Klimkowitz, and I've been on the board for about 23 years, and it's gone by quickly. I guess I would describe my, what I think others would be a pain in the ass.
That's one word, too.
But I would like to think that maybe they would also describe me as determined.
AKA determined. Okay, thank you, Anna, thank you. Peter?
Pete Dombrowski. Been serving as a Board of Education member for five years. I think others would describe me as analytical.
Analytical, okay, thank you. What stood out about that exercise? Anything stand out?
We had to think about how others perceived us.
Yeah, and it's all about perception, isn't it? It really is about perception. And as we go through today's workshop, what you'll see is a lot of this is perception. And we all come into this with different perceptions, so just kind of keep that thought in mind as we go through forward. I'm moving on to Slide Number Five, and one of the things you'll see about this particular workshop is it's divided into three sections. Understanding why, there's a why educational equity, there's a what is educational equity, and then there's a how do you actually implement educational equity within your district? So what's the why, the what, and the how? So naturally, we're going to begin with the why. Anytime you have an equity workshop, one of the things you've got to always think about is definitions. So we're on Slide Six, which is on participant manual page nine, and if you would go to page nine, please, let's talk about some of the definitions that we're going to be encountering as we go through the workshop today. I'd like for you just to kind of skim some of those definitions. Now, I'm going to give you maybe about two minutes just to skim some of them, and we will go a little more into depth as we go throughout the workshop. Okay, that's a nice little skim. One of the terms that I do want to actually call your attention to is insiders and outsiders, because we refer to it sometimes, but we really don't talk about it. So if you will, please, let me just read this definition. When a system of advantages and disadvantages is set up in a society, outsiders usually do not get to experience most of the advantages. Insiders often take their advantages for granted. So that's kind of a working definition that we'll have for today when we see that term, insiders and outsiders. Today's workshop is kind of interesting. When we first started our journey, we said, hey, this workshop is going to, it has a lot to do with racial and ethnicity, race and ethnicity. There's a lot of focus on it. But it doesn't say that any of the other dimensions of diversity are not as important. And we're going to talk about ways to hear from all voices in your community as we go along our journey. But it's interesting, in June of last year, when they said race, ethnicity, we're going to focus on those, I kind of said, "Ooh, really?" But I tell you now, think about what's happened in our world over the last few months or so. It's probably Africa, but again, we're going to be looking at race and ethnicity, so we'll define those, but we're also going to be looking at all the other dimensions of diversity and talk about how you hear from all the voices in your community as you go through this equity journey. And I've noticed one of the things that I had a chance to print out was this particular sheet I guess all of you all are familiar with. And it says, "Dee Levin Post District 211 Creates Equity Team." So I know that you all have heard me on the journey. Congratulations. So let's move on, and let's talk a little bit about some definitions. Race, we're just going to say, when we talk about race, what are we really talking about here? And we're on Page, Slide Seven, PM Number Nine. Race can be defined as a large grouping of people who share physical characteristics, such as bone structure, skin, hair, eye color. Typically, in America, what do we think of? We think of white, we think of black, we think of Asian. Oftentimes, there's some examples when we talk about race. When we think about ethnicity, we think of people that share an ethnicity, they have similar cultural aspects in common, such as ancestry, geography, dress, history, language, beliefs, customs, and traditions. Our ethnic culture can give us a design for it, it just depends on how we live, how do we dress, how do we speak, how do we raise our children? All of those things deal with our ethnicity. So race, ethnicity. A little bit more about ethnicity. People can, I'm going to the next slide, Slide Nine. People can be from different ethnic groups and yet identify in terms of race. So we may have Italian-Americans, or whites that are Italian, we have whites that are Polish, we have whites that are from all kinds of different ethnicities. People can also share nationality or national origins, be in the same class of origin, for instance. When you think of your native or tribal affiliations, a lot of times, you'll have the Cherokee, you have the Sioux, but they have very different customs. People choose their ethnic identity, right? Think about a person that was adopted, and they may be, their parents may be one ethnicity, but they have chosen to be the ethnicity of their adopted parents as opposed to their biological parents. People choose their ethnic identity as well. Have you all seen that ancestry.com? And have you seen that commercial where someone thinks they're one ethnicity, and then all of a sudden, they find out they're Irish, and they get their badge picked up, they start dancing and all. So over time, even through ancestry.com, people have changed their ethnic identity over time. But a lot of people, especially in America, are not even aware of their ethnic heritage. They may have been told as a child, you have a little bit of this, a little bit of that, a little German, a little Irish, a little this. So you really don't necessarily connect with any particular ethnic identity, and that's okay as well. So that's ethnicity. What we're going to do now is we're going to the next slide, which is Slide Ten. It also happens to be in the participant manual on Page Ten. We're going to do what we call ethnic introductions. And what, how this looks is, on the left side of the chart, what you will see is, if you identify, the new board members and superintendent, if you identify with a specific ethnic group, we're going to ask you to let us know what that ethnic group is, where does it come from, and then we're going to ask you to just identify one of your favorite things about being a part of that group, and what is one of the proudest achievements of that group? If you identify with an ethnic group. On the right side, if you don't identify with a specific ethnic group, we're going to ask you to think about an ethnic group that you know through marriage, through travel, through neighbors, or whatever, and then identify that group, and then say, what do you enjoy most about this group, and for what is this group respected, honored, and appreciated? So either you identify with an ethnicity, or you don't, or maybe you vote, maybe you identify with both sides of the spectrum. Are the instructions clear? Yes or no?
Yes.
And of course, you know we're going to demonstrate this, correct? Because we want to make sure they're very, very clear. So if I were to do this, I would go to the left side. I identify as African-American, from Africa, and what's one of my favorite things about the group? I would say our creative expression, as evidenced by dance, song, spoken word. And one of the proudest achievements of the group, I say, is the historically Black Colleges and Universities, HBCUs, of which have educated many of my ancestors.
Thank you, Sandra. So I'm going to go right, because I don't identify with an ethnic group as I was growing up. I have assumed an ethnicity through being a foreign exchange student, and then my husband's family being from that country, so that would be Italian. And I very much enjoy their passion for their family and their love of food.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're going to ask you all to do the same thing. We're going to ask you to spend about 30 seconds, no more than 30 seconds, identifying your ethnicity on the left or the right side of this bar, and then we'll talk. Okay, once again, we're going to say, who wants to start off first? Anybody want to start first?
I'll start first.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Chinese, 100%. My family's from the Toysan area of China, which is right back from Hong Kong. One of the great things about my particular ethnicity is our cooking, which is well-known. And then I guess one of the proudest things that I am aware of is all the struggles that Asian people have gone through through the years to accomplish what they've done now.
Great, thank you, thank you. What was the name of the province again?
It's Toysan.
Okay, thank you. Great, thank you. Next?
I'll go this time. So I'm going to say what I believe my ethnicity is. At the same time, I'm going to say that when other people say that they're of the same ethnic group as I am, I correct them to let them know that the ethnic group is a religion and not an ethnicity, and that is Jewish. Okay? And I'm classifying it as an ethnicity based on your definition of cultural and things like that, right? And my favorite part about being Jewish is a lot of the commonality that we have as an ethnic group, and the sharing of those commonalities, from food, to beliefs, to our religion, to pride in our youth, and things like that. One of the proudest achievements of my ethnicity is the fact that, similar to Ed, is that we've overcome challenges historically and continue to do so as a group.
Thank you, thank you, Steve. I think we'll just go around this way. Kim, is that okay?
I'm actually going to go to the right, and for me, it's a religion as well. I'm a unitarian universalist. It's the only thing that really connects with me in this specific way. What do I enjoy most about the group? We have seven principles that we believe in, and I really love those seven principles. And for what is the group respected, honored, and appreciated? I would say the traditions balance what we call an individual journey with the building of a community together. So I like the honoring of both of those things in the universal, unitarian universalist tradition.
Thank you very much. Pete?
I think I identify with just being born and raised on the South Side of Chicago, and the cultural value that I've taken from that is basically a solid work ethic and a blue-collar attitude towards getting things done.
What part of the South, I'm from the South Side.
Hugish.
Okay, good, good, good. Not too far from me, I'm Southeastern.
Well, I would identify the ethnic group as Ukrainian, because both my parents were from the Ukraines, and when I was a little kid, I didn't speak English, so we spoke Ukrainian and Polish at home. So that was what we grew up with. One of the favorite things is always at the holiday times, there was a lot of the church, the Eastern Orthodox, and, you know, the Easter baskets and the Christmas, and all of those things were important, and the singing, and the men singing, doing the caroling from house to house. As far as one of the greatest accomplishments, I'm not exactly certain in regards to that for the Ukrainian, but I know one thing that they've always been passionate about is the eggs, and the decorating of the eggs, and how intrinsic they are and everything, and just some of the stories behind those eggs and where they come from.
Great, thank you so much.
Just an American, proud of the freedom that we have here to do and say just about anything we want, just about all the time.
Thank you.
So I'm going to start on the left and move to the right. So I think the ethnic group that I identify would be an Italian-American. One of my favorite parts of being in that group is food. And then I'm going to move to the right in terms of what is respected, honored, and appreciated, and it's passion. That would be within my own family growing up, the passion, didn't matter what we were doing. There was passion, sometimes good, sometimes bad, but there was always passion.
Always bad, okay, great, thank you. Thank you all so much. Again, what stood out about that exercise for you all, as you listened to each other's stories?
Something I thought about was looking at myself, and maybe we're going to get to it later in this training program, is understanding and appreciating other ethnic groups, other people, other differences, and things like that versus, because I don't spend a lot of time looking at myself, right? Looking within, I'm always trying to appreciate and understand and value, and do the same thing with my children, and encourage other people that I work with to do the same. So it was a challenge for me, because I don't do that on a normal basis.
Thank you for sharing that. And it's interesting, as we've done this workshop, we hear that. And it's interesting, as we've done this workshop, we hear that oftentimes. But, okay, thank you. What else? What else?
Things you think about your own heritage, and sometimes bringing back positive memories and sometimes some negative memories in regards to it. But it's what you learned and what you take with you, and, you know, each person makes a choice, what they want to carry on and what they may want to change.
Thank you. Do you think it affects you at the board table?
A fun degree.
Did you see any similarities? Let's people share. Were there any similarities? There's something about that food. We all come back.
I think a similarity is, we have differences.
But I think there was a pride in each one of our backgrounds. So I think that that was important.
I mean, to be honest, for me, I suppose I was raised in one ethnic tradition, and I reject it as an adult. And I wouldn't think that, certainly for people, and I don't think that that would be necessarily a rare experience for people as well. So, you know, that's something to think through. It was certainly something I had to think through in answering this question.
And even when I was talking about ethnicity, defining ethnicity, people do, over time, change, when they come to new truths, new experiences, and also, so thank you for sharing that. But it's something that, it's amazing that we need to think about. Now, let's take this to the classroom. Can you see this exercise having value in the class? Every child feeling valued, feeling understood, feeling that their culture, bringing back those different cultures. How many different ethnicities do you have in this district? I bet there's a lot.
Well, by your definition, it's infinite.
So we all have different experiences. We all have different experiences that we bring. And each one of those children, each one of your staff, is bringing some different experience to their job every day, to the students of this great community. So think about that, too. As you think about, where would this exercise fit? Try it with them in the classroom. I mean, that's obviously racist, of course. But try it with your staff, and see what happens. And see if you find things that are similar, yet there's so many differences and value differences, it's a lot of what this is all about. And we're going to actually call that cultural responsiveness. And one of the aims of this particular workshop is cultural responsiveness. It's not just adding other cultural references. Yes, we all, it's nice to hear about each other, but it's about listening to and understanding others' cultural lives. That's what this is really all about. Why is it that this person has this kind of fault, or this decision, or dresses this way? It's because we all have to sometimes just listen and hear and understand where a person is coming from. So cultural responsiveness is the aim of this workshop today.
How do you deal with the challenge of, we don't have time for that?
Do you want my... Honestly, does anybody have an expression to have an answer to that, or a thought about what Bob said?
I think you have to, you end up making time for it either way. It's just whether or not, because... So as an example, taught health education for a long time, and these sorts of references, I mean, you know, we all bring ourselves to the classroom. So these experiences and people's identities and perspectives show up every day in front of you. So, you know, you can create specific space to have these kinds of discussions where, you know, you can have specific goals in mind, for example, specific learning objectives, or you can not make the space for it and end up dealing with it more implicitly and more casually, I think, through the year, because these experiences, you know, are in the classroom, these people are in the classroom.
Yeah, I think that, I would actually echo exactly what she said, because they show up. I mean, I think you can't afford not to take the time, in my opinion. Because if you look at what we did now, it wasn't a long exercise. But I think as instructors, as adults, we do need to understand each and every child and their experiences, and why they do what they do, and how they do what they do. I think it's incumbent upon us as adults to try to understand, not only just the children, but also the adults as well, too. So I would just say, in answer to your question, I would say, we have to take the time in order to include, have an equitable school district.
This seems to imply that you're going to displace something else, or that we have excess capacity to begin with.
Or maybe you have more time now, if you understand what the child, or understand the experience the child has. Maybe you won't have as much time. Maybe you'll spend less time in discipline, for instance, or in understanding why that child is doing what they're doing. So, I mean, you can see it anyway. I hear what you're saying, right now you have a curriculum that is full. I get that, I do understand that. But I do believe that if you really want to have that equitable school district, you're going to have to just take some time, and it doesn't have to be a lot of time, but just to let that person identify and say who they are and what's important to them. Any other thoughts?
But I think, Bob, also, yes, if you have that cultural learning, if you apply it to other classrooms, you will find that takes away from the learning of a person's cultural heritage. But it's so important that those goals be incorporated and will keep with them in life, so all things will value them in the future.
Obviously.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, just the practical application of what you're suggesting. I struggle, but then I'm not a teacher in the classroom. I appreciate the experience and hearing things about people that I didn't understand before, but we had to spend the time to do that, and I have a hard time imagining different classrooms, different kids, different interrelationships of kids, and to take that time in each class throughout the day, or how to incorporate that, other than acknowledging that these conditions exist, which I appreciate. The formalization of spending that time, I have a hard time seeing that.
Lisa, do you have any comments?
I do.
I don't need to put you on the spot, but...
Sure, absolutely. So a teacher will always work towards getting to know their students better. That's part of, they know they will, they will connect to their students, they'll excel in the classroom, they'll make those connections. And how they do it, teachers go about it differently. And what our equity work does, it allows them to think differently about how they're going to approach that, making students feel welcome, making them feel like they're connecting to them, making sure they understand them. So we did it in one way. We took the time, we stopped, we paused, and we're doing it in one way. Teachers, that's how they think. They creatively figure out how they're going to weave it into what they do. How an English teacher would approach it would be very different from how a math or a science teacher would do it, to weave it in.
Any other thoughts? Once again, the agenda for today, I'm on page number 12, slide number 12, is to understand why educational equity is needed, what it is, and how to make it a reality throughout your cultural responsibility. There are some objectives that we have today, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on objectives, we're just going to get to them. But basically, we do feel that this is an imperative, if there's a sense of urgency in our school districts, to create that equitable school district. And so that's kind of the overarching theme of this workshop. We talked a little bit about ethnic backgrounds, and how important it is to understand why we make the decisions we make, and to make sure every child feels valued, and every person in the system feels valued. One of the things, I think most of you all probably have been through some kind of formal training with IAFD, we always talk about foundational principles. But this time, we're going to talk about your job description via an equity lens. We're going to differentiate between equality and equity. And I saw somewhere in here that you all are looking for systematic changes, and all of you will come with a systematic approach to achieving equity and this cultural responsiveness, and hopefully we'll have an action plan, which I think you have already begun to create with yesterday. So those are some of the objectives for today. The status quo just says, it's open here, you can barely see it over here, it just says, the sensitivity, trust, appreciation, respect, and loyalty. Some of the guidelines for today's presentation include honor confidentiality, if you stay fully, that's respectful, if you're going to agree to this, and that's fine. Listen for understanding if there are others that you want to add.
Just to make sure we're all on the same page, there's really nothing here that's confidential. This is all public domain. We understand that, right?
Yes, that is true. One of the things that we are considering is, you know, these kind of workshops, do you put them in public, or do you have an enclosed session? And by now, it's, you know, the same towers, you still have a good time. At this time, to illustrate the point that this whole equity journey has to do with being uncomfortable, and you'll notice over on the left side, to my left, there's a sign that says, learn how to be comfortable with discomfort. And that is part of the journey. A lot of us are going to be uncomfortable, because it's something that some of us have not done before, and everybody has a different perception. We saw that at the beginning, especially through real situations. And also, sometimes this journey is designed to be everyone comfortable. So learn how to be comfortable with discomfort. So what I would have you do, if we were in a different room and in a different space, I would actually have you stand up. And would you just stand up for me? And what I would have you do is take everything, I'm not going to have you do this, because of the COVID environment, I would actually have you take all of your material, everything that makes you feel comfortable, and I'd ask you to move to a different place. And why would I do that? Because one of the things, and I would ask you to move to a different place, if we were in a really large space, and I would like you, maybe somebody who's been in the board for a year and a half, versus somebody who's been on the board 13 years, and maybe kind of mix up the tables, mix up the room a little bit. And that's what I would have you do. And one of the reasons we have to do that is because the data set, the research set are more primitive. They take longer to form, you can imagine why, because we tend to gravitate to people to similar to ourselves, but they tend to be much more innovative and all. So that's what I'm doing. Typically, people in experience, there's something different when they kind of associate themselves with someone, and maybe they would not know that. But in this case, I'm going to ask you to have a seat now, and then we're going to move on, and please go over to the floor.
So if you could turn to page 40 in your participant manual. We're going to take a walk through history. And we're going to go around the room and read each one of these entries by year. And I'm going to ask you to read the entry, but please do not read the italicized, the citation. We don't need to read that. We're just going to read the entry as it appears without the citation. So if anyone would not want to read, you simply will say pass whenever I call on your name, okay? So 1619, if Bob, you could start us off?
400 years ago, enslaved Africans were first brought to Point Comfort, a coastal port in the English colony of Virginia. A Dutch ship carried 20 enslaved Africans who were sold to the colonists. Slavery followed for 250 years.
So we'll go to your right, Dr. Small, 1776.
1776, the Declaration of Independence declared, "All men are created equal."
1787, Ed.
The preamble of the United States Constitution includes, "Be the people of the United States in order to perform, perform, or perfect union, establish justice, which carries the liberty of liberty."
1790, Steve.
The Second Continental Congress votes the Bill of Rights and the First Naturalization Law that states which immigrants can become citizens of the United States. Congress says it will have a policy of open immigration, and that no category of people will be excluded from the United States. But then, with no debate, or at least nothing that appears in the annals of Congress, Congress restricts the process of becoming a citizen to free white people.
1819 to 1847, Kim.
Anti-literacy laws are enacted in most southern states prohibiting teaching enslaved people to read, or write, or to perform jobs that use reading or writing. However, laws restricting the education of black children and adults are not limited to the South. The penalties include fines, whippings, and imprisonment.
1819 to 1973, Pete.
Beginning with the Indian Civilization Act of 1819, Native American children are taken from their homes and placed in Indian residential boarding schools, where they are forced to assimilate into Euro-American culture by banning the use of their native dress, languages, customs, and spirituality. U.S. military, missionaries, and teachers act with congressional and presidential order to forcibly remove American Indian children ages 6 to 16, and place them in boarding schools far from home in harsh and sometimes deadly conditions. If parents refuse, annuities or rations are withheld, or parents can be jailed.
1896, Hannah.
Implezi versus Ferguson. The U.S. Supreme Court rules that separate but equal facilities for African-Americans do not violate the Fourteenth Amendment, that had granted citizenship and equal civil and legal rights to African-Americans and those enslaved who had been emancipated after the American Civil War. The separation includes schools, public transportation, theaters, restaurants, parks, and cemeteries, and ignores evidence that the facilities for blacks are inferior to those intended for whites.
1927, Bob.
In its decision, Lung versus Rice, the Supreme Court holds that the exclusion on account of race of a child of Chinese ancestry does not violate the Fourteenth Amendment. The decision effectively bars Chinese children and children from other minorities from schools reserved for whites.
Lisa, 1930.
Mexican-Americans face continued discrimination in employment, housing, public facilities, the judicial system, and educational institutions. The Texas Court of Appeal rules that school districts can use such criteria as language and irregular attendance due to seasonal work as a justification to separate Mexican-Americans and white students.
1954, Ed.
In a landmark decision, this Supreme Court decision in Brown versus Board of Education compares substance of equal education, and other services will not be effective.
1957, Steve.
I'm going to pass.
Kim?
President Dwight D. Eisenhower signs Executive Order 10730, desegregation of Central High School to enforce integration in Little Rock, Arkansas. He sends the Army's 101st Airborne Division into Little Rock after Governor Oroville Fabbas had ordered the Arkansas National Guard to block nine black students from enrolling in the formerly all-white high school.
1964, Pete.
The Civil Rights Act of 1964 passes and outlaws discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. It prohibits unequal application of voter registration requirements, employment discrimination, and racial segregation in schools, employment, and public accommodations.
1966, Hannah.
After analyzing surveys from 60,000 teachers and 600,000 students, James Coleman publishes his 737-page report, Equality of Educational Opportunity, and coins the phrase, "The Achievement Gap." His report details the first concrete evidence that African-American children were testing several grade levels behind their white counterparts.
1971, Bob.
In Lee versus Johnson, Judge William Douglas rules the 1954 Brown versus Board of Education decision applies to Chinese-Americans, saying Brown versus Board of Education was not written for blacks alone.
1990, Lisa.
U.S. schools have become more separated by race. 83% of black children in Illinois attend segregated schools. These shoot schools show the highest levels of neglect.
2002, Ed.
No child up behind you, please, sign and go along, person, door, study board, and speak to the Latin American community that has closed the achievement gap between poor and minority students, and more their advantage peers. With the first federal recognition of a need to boost the performance of 90% of students, including English language learners, students in special education, and force the minority children to advance to get achievement of the, on average, top 10th ranked peers.
2007, Steve.
A McKinsey and Company report states that the persistence of the achievement gap in the U.S. has the economic effect of a permanent national recession.
2014 to 2015.
The state of Illinois passes a law prompting changes in discipline policies stating that current policies are ineffective and contribute to disproportionately high rates of discipline among students of color.
2018, Pete.
The Southern Poverty Law Center surveys more than 1,700 social studies teachers and finds that little over half of surveyed teachers said they talk with their students about the continued legacy of slavery in today's society.
2019.
A UCLA and Penn State report states that the U.S. students are increasingly attending racially-isolated schools. As a result, the gap between black and Latino students and white peers is growing wider. They are now racially and economically segregated. Segregation is not simply an education issue, it threatens the cohesiveness of our nation.
2019, Bob.
The National School Boards Association Equity Matters Advocacy Agenda states, "We are at a moment in history where we have an opportunity to make unprecedented progress to bring about educational equity, and we must."
2020. Probably, it's not there. We could probably add more to this. We could probably add more to this, unfortunately, but as we went through that historical travel We see how race has been intertwined within our history. And we've heard the coin, I'm sure you've heard it. Have you heard, "I don't see color, I'm colorblind"? Have you heard of that before? Yes. But when we have a society that's based on the construction of race, we have to acknowledge how our history has impacted to where we are today. We have to acknowledge, own that history, and move forward so that we can all come into a culturally-responsive organization where we value color and become color brave. And see that on the continuum, and Sandra will speak to that in a little bit about how we can move out of this, "I don't see color," to where we do see the color and acknowledge it. And this walk through history, that's very brief. I know it seems long, there are a lot of entries, but there are historically white that were also in different groups, ethnic groups that were marginalized throughout history and had to overcome those challenges as well. And as we move through, and you want to become a culturally-responsive organization by acknowledging the history, to move your organization forward and become color brave. Looking backward to inform a path forward. You should be on Slide 19 in your manual on Page 13. So our history of advantage for some and disadvantages for others has created the inside or outside environment. Sandra explained that term earlier to you. We live with today. While there are moments of our country living up to the promise of liberty and justice for all, the discrimination against people of color has never let up in the midst of the oppression. Thank goodness we have made some educational gains. As we move from the 50th anniversary of the Coleman Report, remember that came about in 1966, where the achievement gap was first coined. Educational equity is still an unrealized goal. And finally, we do know that the achievement gap can be closed when we focus on creating a culturally-responsive and inclusive environment. So as we go through the workshop tonight, you'll learn some key ideas on how to become a culturally-responsive organization. And as a board, we'll talk about what that means, looking through an equity lens, and Sandra's going to walk through the six foundational principles that IASB teaches to and through that equity lens to talk to you about that.
You've always been thinking we're going to get away without doing those six foundational principles. We always have to do those, hopefully some kind of way. But let me just kind of say to you as board members, you own educational equity in your district. You own it. And basically just saying that every single child has, needs to, deserves to have access to an educational rich curriculum. Every child. And I think everybody here probably believes in that. They do not, they do not. And that's all it really is, is just a spouting that you all, as board members, are the people that can begin to make that happen within your district. And so again, let's look at our foundational principle. You all know the first foundational principle and arguably the most important, to clarify the district first. That's what you do as board members. You're policymakers. So what we'd like you to do is if you think about creating new policy, approving policy, that you think about it through the lens of equity. If there's policies out there that are not equitable, then you want to dismember their policies. What's happening with a lot of the boards around the state and really around the country is they're literally going through their, you have a policy committee, or is it a policy of the whole? Basically, they're going through and looking and thinking, are these policies good for our children? Are they getting access to the information and the education that they need? And when you see people enjoying that, that's one step that you as board members can do. So clarify that district purpose, through policy, through an equity lens, it's something that you can begin to do. The board connects with the community. Remember that, one two-way conversation. You all are enjoying that now. Again, as I was looking at some of the things that you're planning on doing, I saw there's an equity office, there's focus groups, there's opportunity for community feedback, a lot of that is going, it's beginning, I don't know if it's starting in October, we're planning, we're planning on doing it in October, maybe it's been delayed a little bit too. And this is where I think that it's important that you go and reach out. So it's not just the number of people to come to the meetings, the loudest voices, but some of the voices that you don't hear. You have to be aggressive, it's important to actually listen to your community and find out what's going on. And that's what one of those audits will do. You employ the superintendent and you value the superintendent. Her goals should then be aligned with your equity goals, and she should be better at the point. Delegate authority to your superintendents to identify inequities in this school district as board members and color partners to be there. And then develop an equity-based practice. Monitoring the performance, again, this is something that sometimes boards do well, but a lot of boards struggle with this. When you're in district demographics, there's been a lot of times where it's, "Oh, no, that's not this, that's not this." This is the speech of many languages and all. But it's also about looking at some of that important data, the graduation data, the discipline data is one of the things that we're pondering, really is pointing to one of the inequities within school districts. So look at all the data that has to do with children, participation rates for children, who's participating, who's not participating, and why. Those are the kind of data that we're talking about. And excuse, address, but don't excuse the scarcity. And then take responsibility for itself. That's what you're going to do right here. It's an individual journey, and we're going to say this many times, this is a personal journey, and we'll give you some tools as to how you can begin to create that equitable school district from a personal perspective, but it's also an organizational perspective as well. So if it's personal and if it's all together, you will create an equitable school district that everyone will be proud of. So with that, any questions? We're kind of concluding with the why equity is an educational imperative as we've seen. Any questions on the first chapter of why, which is important.
One point that I'd like to open up for discussion is, it's one thing to create the environment, it's another thing to engage those within the environment. What has been the best practices for doing some of that as far as trying to get the other part of it? We can create a wonderful environment, but if nobody takes advantage of that opportunity, it fails.
It's a phenomenal point, a phenomenal point. When we get into the what of educational equity, we're going to present how this is a systemic, systematic kind of thing, and talk about how it's ongoing, it's a journey, and we'll give you some kind of a model for how do you incorporate it into your district.
Right, we can incorporate it, I agree, but how do we get the users that we're providing this educational environment to, to engage and participate? Because obviously, you know, with students that are at the high school level, there's always a concern that any information you provide will be turned against them, whether it's bullying, or stereotyping, or things of that nature. And it takes time, and I would almost say more than four years in time, to really garner those shared experiences, to develop the trust that would foster this environment.
And you've answered actually some of your questions, because you're right, it does take time. This is not a, it's not going to happen because we came in and we did a session on that. So I totally agree with you. It will take time. It may take a generation to kind of begin to incorporate these kind of thoughts and ideas into this. But one of the things is if the board is for this, if the board says, "This is what we say is important," and if the board then translates back to the superintendent as your one and only employee, and then she then aligns that to her principals, building principals, and then they align it to the teachers and to the students, that's how we make it systemic and systematic, and it will prevail over time. It's going to happen overnight, you know, sometimes. But we all have to have an accountability, we have to have measurements, and we've got to be able to say, how do we know that this is equitable? How do we know that this, people are getting it? And if the system is accountable at the top, and you hold her accountable, and it permeates, it will happen over time.
All right, I just keep seeing it resetting with every freshman class that enters the school. And I'm just trying to figure out, how do you foster that beyond that?
Is it a one-time event? Are we doing one-time events, or are we doing things over and over and over, the same thing? What we've created is a system.
Right.
Are you saying that you don't think it's working? Is that it's not?
Well, I think that with each new, I mean, we're a district. We get our students for four years, right? We don't control how they come in, we can only control how they go out. And in that four-year period, we turn over graduates and we bring in new students. And as we bring in a new student, we kind of, we kind of have to reset that narrative and reintroduce into the system and then continually process that over time. And that's the part where, you know, from an educational perspective within the four-year high school experience, that's what I'm seeking, is there best practices from the IASB as far as, you know, you're right, we can hold our staff accountable, but on the flip side, every student that comes through that door has to be a willing participant in order for success to occur.
I look at it a little bit differently. Our teachers and the staff in the building are there long-term. They're there more than the four years. And students, when they're coming in as freshmen, they're now being exposed to a new culture, right? The high school culture and the high school experience. And during even that four years, there's learnings beyond the subject matter that they're getting, right? And, you know, my daughter's in college now, and it's, are they getting the college experience, right? And the takeaway from that. Well, the same thing with high school is, and if we can, through ourselves as a board and our teachers and staff, create an equity culture that the students are coming into and they're living in, because just like us at work, they're there most of their waking hours, and they're now in that equity culture, and we're doing things and thinking and expressing and living that way, that one way or another, they're not going to have much of a choice but to get that experience. And some of them will take some things away from it, and some may take other things away from it, but in the end, when they graduate, they're going to have those experiences and learnings that they can do with however they choose once they leave our hallowed walls.
I mean, but would that be a measure of success then? Because when we had recent graduates and even some students coming to the floor, their perspective was they had some of that, they were in school with their peers, and they did have some, but they didn't feel that that was enough.
I think you have to analyze the curriculum that each school is presenting, because you can't just bring it up. You've got to have something for them to grasp on, and something for the staff to develop over time, so they become more effective in teaching over the years. Because anything, you know, you teach something about a different culture, it's going to be new things for a teacher to learn, and then for him to pass that on to the students.
Fair point, but to that point as well, the curriculum rings hollow if the students aren't perceiving it being presented by somebody who genuinely has experiences within that culture. So that's another challenge when we have to develop something that gets the students engaged, because we're sitting here listening to our community tell us that, you know, they came out at 2:11, they went to college, and they were pretty much, they personally felt slapped in the face that they weren't prepared for all of that.
I guess I would make a comment in regards to it, because we had students here that came and spoke, and they spoke of their experiences. But there are also a lot of other students who had very good experience, believed that they learned a great deal, believed that we helped them along. Maybe they weren't doing as well in their elementary, but they were able to, because of services that were provided, the teachers, the staff, the encouragement, were able to get out of school what they wanted to get out of school and felt that they had gotten a great deal out of it. So we've got, what, 12,500 students? So you're going to get a lot of different experiences and a lot of different comments and feelings. So how do you, maybe the question is, we've got to take everyone's opinions and perceptions, as you said, and how do you put all of that together? You've got somebody over here, you've got somebody here, and you've got some people in the middle. So how do you make everybody happy? How do you help everyone achieve? I don't know the answer to that.
And in answer to one thing that you said, is there are so many boards that are the size of your board that are doing this work. And one of the things that we are doing and making spaces for is for people to talk to people who have done it. It's not going to be easy. I agree with you, it is a reset every four years. You're going to get a new group of students, who now you're going to have to share with them what is the culture of this particular district. And when that is ingrained in the system, then it becomes very natural. So this thing is not going to happen overnight. And even the districts that we've seen across the country without you, some of them are doing it, and they're making lots of mistakes, and they're picking up and saying, "This didn't work, but this does work in our district too." So it's not easy work. So I totally agree with you, and I thank you all for your thoughts on this. It doesn't happen overnight. There's a lot of professional development, and that's back to the board. If the board willing to allocate the resources necessary to make sure our teachers and staff are all on board with it. It means changing some behaviors that have been different, you know? And we'll talk about it, we'll end the day with behaviors. What are some of the behaviors, important behaviors that we need to make part of the system? And those are learned, a lot of these are learned, just like we learn whatever we know now. We've got to relearn some things as well. And that's what you hired, was very capable, Dr. Small, to help kind of integrate into the system that you currently have too. But your points are valid, and they make a lot of things. And one of the things that we do do is just provide spaces for districts of flight size to talk about future issues.
Do you mind? I'd like to make, I mean, one thing that comes to mind is, you know, we were talking, when we were looking through the past, kind of the timeline that we went over. I mean, schools are more segregated now, you know, and I'm talking about a national lens, the schools are more segregated now than they were, you know, immediately after Brown versus Board of Education. They've been getting more segregated, particularly in the northern parts of the country. On average, schools are less segregated in the South, in partially because of the way, the differences in the way states fund their education. You know, because housing segregation is in everything. When people live in segregated communities, it's really hard to create diverse schools. Housing segregation is in everything. So when I'm listening to those comments, like, can we as a board of education make some kind of policy that fixes housing segregation, you know, in our community? No, we can't do that. There are a lot of factors that go into equity that lie without our control. You know, we can't fix housing segregation, we can't fix food deserts, you know, all these other things that are part of the systemic disadvantages that we were talking about earlier. So I guess I think, rather than focusing like, well, that's an excuse not to try, because there's a lot out without our control, I mean, to me, then that just means we have to focus on what is within our control as a board. So we might not be able to equitably allocate housing resources in Palatine, but we can certainly make sure that our resources as a district are equitably allocated for our students. So I mean, that's my perspective on that kind of a question. We have to first organize, like, what can we actually control? You know, and then focus on that.
Thank you. Thank you all for this. Any other thoughts before we move on? Hour two, the power seven, I mean, I'm definitely teaming with the members to do what you can do to support this work. And some of it will be allocated in some areas. One of the things that's happening a lot, we're seeing is partnerships with housing, with food deserts, with all of the, the partnerships across our country now are growing rapidly, so that we can kind of take on this work, not just as education, but it's like you said, housing, it's healthcare, all of those. But all of those things go into creating that child that we want in our schools, because we need to make sure that child is ready to learn, and they get, and so that does affect how they, you know, learn. Thank you. Steve, you want to move on?
Yes, thank you. So moving into the what is educational equity, I think a lot of those questions may be answered as we move through this next section. The first section really dealt with why. Why do we need to take on the work of equity and move through this equity journey as an individual and an organization? So the slide that you see now, you should be on Slide 23, and it is in your manual on Page 17. It's a familiar graphic, but yet it's a little different. What do you see the children reaching for in that graphic? That's a diploma. That's a diploma. And it's the old fashioned chalkboard there with the lines at the top, which we don't see anymore around, but I can remember the days when the chalkboards were there and you had the lines at the top and the alphabet was at the top. And those students are all reaching for diploma. This graphic is usually the children reaching or peeking over the fence. This is a Be Young graphic and it's, it's a little bit different. So if we look at the left side of the graphic, we have the word equality, sameness. All those students are standing on the same size, little podium there. They can't reach the diploma. Equality only works if everyone starts from the same point, the same position in life. If we look over on the right side, it's the word equity. Equity means fairness, meeting where people's needs are at, where our students' needs are at. So there, they're all able to reach the diploma because their needs were met. The podiums are the sizes that they needed. So how does this look in a school district? Let's say that you're a district with five schools, for instance. You have a goal that says, we want all students reading at or above grade level. So you hire 10 reading professionals to come in and help out to get all your students where they're at. Two of your schools, the students are at above or exceeding. They're doing well in reading. Three of your schools, students are struggling, they're below. If you put those 10, divide them equally, two in each building, is that really serving the needs of the students? Not really, right? Wouldn't it be better to allocate those reading resource professionals where they're needed, where the kids are struggling? That's what we're talking about with equity is, is meeting the students where their needs So we're going to walk through some definitions. If we look at this one, this is from NSBA. We've read this in our, our history. We are at a moment in history where we have an opportunity to make unprecedented progress, to bring about educational equity, equity, and we must. So here we are really focused on the urgency of the now. Now is the time to do it. We have to get to educational equity. The next one, slide 25, is ISB's equity statement. Equity means we are making sure that every single child has the tools and support they need to be successful. This definition is focusing on tools and support to be equitable. IASB has a definition as well. Educational equity means that every student has access to the educational resources and rigor they need at the right moment in their education, and students' needs are not going unmet due to race, ethnicity, dominant language, disability, gender, sexual orientation, religion, family background, and/or family income. Here we're focusing on the needs of the student and every student. Be Young and Associates also have a definition of equity, a set of practices developed by a school district to ensure educational outcomes are not negatively impacted by race, ethnicity, dominant language, family income, among others. So question for Township High School District 211. At this point, do you have an equity statement? Some districts are incorporating a statement into policy. Do you think about where your work is at right now as board members? Where is that at? Working on it, right? Working toward it. We'll supply you with some samples, um, from schools around the nation, districts that are doing the work, so that you can kind of gauge. We as an association think that it's very important that it's specific to you. You can see how all these definitions were very different, but all focused on educational equity. And so whenever you write what that means for 211, you want to make sure that it's specific for 211 and the students here at 211.
We, we did adopt an equity statement when we were on the federal stage for other issues. That was our equity statement, right? As part of our board policies?
Around educational equity?
Pardon?
It was, I think it was on educational equity, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Okay. I thought we did have an equity statement when we-
You may be right.
Yeah.
Did we have an equal opportunity statement? Is that what it was?
I think that was part of, yeah.
So maybe it was in that. I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, because we did go through some very specific language in there.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that would, if that's along the same lines of what you're referencing, or if you have something even beyond that that maybe we're not doing, but we, we've been on the national stage with equity and we're, we're very familiar with some of that.
Good. It sounds like it's similar. I don't know if it's specifically an equity statement per se. I'd have to see exactly, but it's not, I do know the work has begun here, based upon what I've looked on, the website, et cetera. I do know that the district has begun the equity journey with your committee works that you have in place that are starting to gear up, et cetera. So this brings us to-
Maybe, could you, could, could Dr. Small put some of that in context? Because-
Sure.
Um, I think what appears, what you can see from our website, I'm just guessing, doesn't do justice to what my perception is goes on here.
Okay, perhaps so.
Maybe Dr. Small could say something about that.
So part of the work of equity that's happening within our equity team from the district, from within this workshop, um, from within the, the training that administrators and our teachers go through within our school, part of it is looking from a different lens at what we have and what needs to be changed, modified, or completely different. And I think that would be something that would most likely come forward in the plan that comes to you in the spring. Certainly would be something as a board we can look at along the way in terms of the policies that we have, looking at them from an equity lens. And I think that what you're referencing, Mr. Dombrowski, is certainly, uh, some of the policies that we have that want every student to be successful and to make sure that they're, they're treated from a lens of equity, uh, but to keep looking at those and ensuring that they are still saying what we want them to say.
And there's some-
Thank you.
Here's some good language here. I'm looking here, District 211 has a strong interest in the school community where concepts of equity are valued and integrated into the mindset, actions, and daily interactions of every student, staff, and parent. We have been and continue to be a leader in this area. So there's, there's some kind of beginning language here already, um, that looks good. And so are you still on track with the development of the strategic equity plan for 2020, Spring 2021?
So our teams are currently finalizing how they're going to do their outreach.
Mm-hmm.
That would be through focus group surveys and that discussion is being had right now as to how we're going to do that.
Excellent. That, that kind of brings us to the equity journey that you will find on page 18 or slide 28, whichever is more convenient for you. So what do you see in the middle of this depiction, this graphic here? What is in the middle? Anyone? What's in the middle?
The board and the superintendent.
The leadership of the district. That is the nucleus of this plan. So as you are on this journey to create a culturally responsive organization, a school district that is culturally responsive, you see that that commitment is in the middle there, that the nucleus. It has to start with the Board of Education, with the district leadership, and then it permeates throughout the district. But how does that happen? How do we do that? What does that look like? So the first, you enter this wheel up at the top and that Navy section, which is called the cultural audit, this term can be interchanged. This is a Be Young graphic, so it's her work. I've seen this term, cultural audit, used differently. Equity audit, audit, cultural audit. Sandra, we did something at the association and I always forget what it was called.
Of course.
Yes, I-
Scan.
An environmental scan is what we called it. So what does that entail? That entails hearing the voices throughout the district. So anonymously, there's going to be surveys, focus groups, homogeneous groupings, hearing those voices throughout the district on what's really happening, what is really happening. So those voices, through these scans, through these surveys, these groups, these focus groups, we're going to find either what's working and what's not working, which when we get to that gold area, the feedback comes through with key themes, themes that need to be addressed, or maybe they don't need to be addressed throughout the district. But those voices from that audit really gives the feedback and makes this determination of the need for the equity work. And this is when oftentimes, you know, you're hearing things back and this should come to the district leadership, to the board. And that can be kind of hurtful whenever you hear some of those voices come back. Um, that feedback then through those themes go to the next, where we're going to integrate learning with systems. So once we have those themes identified, once we know what's truly needing to be addressed within the district, that's where it really becomes the work. Here we're going to look at goals, we're going to look at the outcomes, we're going to infuse timelines with those goals, we're going to hold people accountable for the work that needs to, to occur. So this is not just looking at practices, but as Dr. Small said, policies as well that may or may not need to be addressed within the district. Looking at everything through that equity lens, based upon the themes of what we've heard through the surveys, through that feedback that we're gathering. That next one is the cultural responsive education piece. That's when we're really going to get in deep. We have to train staff, we have to provide professional development. You know, what does it, what does it mean to be, uh, be able to address people whenever we hear things in our district that may not be culturally sensitive? How are we going to do that? We need to train our staff how to do that. We need to be able to address that. We need to make sure that the curriculum is aligned with an equity lens. We want to make sure that pieces, we're not missing pieces, so that kids can feel like they have a part in their education system. Then that implementation goes further deep within the system, implementing everything that we've talked about through the goals. That last piece is measurement and accountability. We have to be able to measure where we're at, we have to hold people accountable so that the work can get done. It's also very important to realize that there isn't a piece of this can stand alone. It's all interrelated, it's all linked together, so that it's systematic as we work through it. It's systemic, it goes deep, it goes throughout the system, so it's eventually getting to the kids where we want it to be. And it's also sustainable because we do have that measurement and accountability piece. And it's important to know that you have to keep going back, you have to provide ongoing professional development. If you want anything to work within the system, ongoing professional development around this equity work, it has to be key. So where does that come from? A budget that comes from the board dedicating, making that commitment to allocate the resources to make this work happen. So I want you to turn to page 20 in your participant manual and you'll see there is another survey for you to partake in. So I'll give you a couple of minutes to take that brief survey and then I'll bring you All right. How'd you do with that? A lot of fives? Threes? Some threes? Ones?
I don't have a basis to evaluate myself. It's the comment that I wrote at the very beginning.
Ah, okay.
I don't have a reference point.
Okay. Fair enough, fair enough. Well, as you read through those statements, I don't know if you noticed at all, but they're parallel with this equity journey model that goes through the system. So that should be on the organizational level of where you think the district is at. And you are just beginning this journey, deep diving into the journey with the committees and then reporting back in April. So you might've had some threes and not fives yet. Maybe if we took this in late spring, summer of next year, it might be a little bit different. And that's what we would want to see is that we've made some progress, continual progress on this equity journey, because it is a journey. Couple of key takeaways to, to think about this model is that it's not a one-shot. I think you've heard Sandra and I say this many times tonight, is that it's not, I got this shot, we're all good, we're done. No, it's, it's a journey. It's going to take a commitment. It's going to take goals written from an equity lens infused deep within the system. And we're talking plans that may be three to five years, you know, depending on the system. And it's also, this is not just about the district's journey, but tonight also your journey as a person and how you feel about that educational journey. That model is also three things. It's systemic, goes deep within the system, it's systematic, everything's linking. Remember how I said there's no one piece of that that can stand alone? You can't just address the curriculum without addressing also behaviors around that within the system. Everything is interlinked and it's also sustainable. You want to be able to write timelines with actionable plans and hold people accountable to those. So that first step is the cultural audit and Sandra will walk you through that brief.
We're about to take a break soon, a little bit. So if you want to pull on to the second, probably we're probably a little bit overdue. Sorry, we're probably overdue a break. May I have the, the clicker, please? Thank you. Yeah. So Dee kind of went into the cultural audit and as I look at your plan, phase two, research and community input, it's, if you right now have an equity audit, focus groups, opportunities for community feedback beginning October, has that begun? Has that begun? The equity audit as dictated in phase two of your plan? Has that begun or is that beginning or where are you on that?
So we have some audits that are occurring internally.
Okay.
Um, in terms of conducting the focus groups and gather that information widespread, that's the next step.
That's the next step, no. Do you have an outside person to do it or have you, are you getting to that step?
Not yet.
You're not getting to, okay, great, great, great. So, yeah, I think- So yeah, I think that that is so key to this. Again, that's that data piece of it. And how does it look? You know, it's not just a bunch of numbers we're talking about. When we talk about the cultural audit, if you go to your book, page 46, you'll see some examples of what a cultural audit could look like. Again, sometimes some people that do these want to homogeneous groups, so for instance, you would have maybe, you know, by race or ethnicity, you may have groups of people. There's some data that says that people speak more freely when they're around people similar to them. You may have, you know, your staff or you may have admins, you have different versions. But here's some example of, these are some examples on page 46 of what a cultural audit. Some of these are sample of internal voices within your system. We have showed diversity under a carpet, shoved it under a carpet for a long time and you'll see. But again, they're not identified by person, but we're just basically saying these are some of the voices. If you look at the bottom, you'll see some of the external voices because it's so important to, to reach out to the community, to the parents, to business leaders and others in your community. So these are just examples of what you might. And as you look at any of them, do you think any of these would actually, do any of these resonate with you or what might you see in your particular district? The key is listening to your stakeholders, getting the information, however you choose to get that information. And there are several ways to do it and we can help you with that. There are so many different ways and so many people that are out there that are giving you an independent look at your community. So if it's all about cultural responsiveness then, and if that's indeed our aim for the workshop today, oh, here's an example, I'm sorry, on slide number 33. This is just again, one, two, three, four, what, how does it look? You conduct individual anonymous interviews and again, that's with your leadership team. And then number two has you going into the focus groups, which you're starting to do right now. And then there's a report that's developed and finally a presentation with recommendations. So that's kind of how it would look. And that report comes back to the board and to the superintendent and that's at the point where you know exactly what kind of goals you need to implement within your district. We're going to spend the rest of the day or the rest of the evening on cultural responsive education. So again, if our objective is, if our aim is cultural responsiveness, I want to call your attention to, right next to Pete over here, there's something called a cultural responsive continuum. It's also on page 30, 24 in your participant manual if you can even closer look. If you look on the left side, it says destructive, which is where we don't want to be as a district. But if you look on the right side, you'll see valuing color grade, which is what your aspiration should be as a district. So let me just kind of explain what we're really kind of saying when we talk about all these destructive. What is destructive kind of behavior? How do you know, you know, there's destructive behavior inside of your district? Well, earlier we heard about destructive behavior and we heard about the Indian children that were taken out of their communities and their parents were jailed if they didn't allow their children to assimilate. We know that's destructive, name calling, that's destructive. But I would also submit destructive practices can also be quite subtle such as what one feels as though their cultural way of celebrating holidays are not acknowledged or included. That's also a way of feeling, that's destructive practices. The cumulative effect of being overlooked can be quite destructive for children in our district. Makes sense? Subtle, but it's still destructive. If you move over in the continuum to the right, you'll see sameness and colorblind. Dee talked about colorblind, when we again, don't acknowledge that people have different colors. It's okay. Sameness does not mean less than or difference does not mean less than. So that child that, you know, comes to school and basically we're saying, if you don't act like us, you're not included with us. That would be that sameness, we're trying to preach that within the school district. Tolerance means we're moving over to the right, we'll tolerate you being here as long as you're in my district, you play by my rules. Moving over to the right, acceptance, it's a little bit better, celebrating. So we celebrate differences, we acknowledge differences and I would imagine some, you do that here in your district, but you may have like, for instance, a special month for a particular ethnicity and you give them a month, but maybe that ethnicity still does not feel like they are part of the school district. It's like a visitor in the school district. What we really want to aspire to is valuing and color grade. When we get to the point where our group's accomplishments, worldview, history, all of that is part, all that culture is part of the school district and it's considered in decision-making, the district is now our house. So every child feels that they are part and a member of our district. So from destructive to valuing, color grade, what we'd like for you to do at this point, it's kind of a self-evaluation, I would say. You'll notice on your microphone, I'm sorry, on your name tags, you'll see a red circle and you'll see a green star. Are you with me there? And so what I'd like for you to do is I want you to think about district, your district, 211 today. Where do you find that you are today? If you had to evaluate where you are or where you perceive your district is currently today, I'd like for you to put the red dot there. The green star will be used to say where you hope your school district will be in the coming year. Again, we're aspiring to get to the right side of that continuum. Valuing, color grade, we're all aspiring there. Will we ever get there totally? It depends on how optimistic you are. However, but we're still going to aspire to be there. So where are you today, which is the red dot? And where would you, where do you perceive that you will be in the coming year? Okay? Are the instructions clear?
Yes.
Okay. So what I'd like for you to do is trying to honor a little bit of this social distance, I'd like for you to take your dot and also getting you up and moving a little bit, if you would place your dots on the cultural responsiveness continuum and if you'd like me to, I'll take a picture of it just so we can kind of assess where we are year to year. So Pete, would you mind starting off just putting your red dot where you think your perception is the district is today and then, okay? And then I'm going to ask Anna to kind of follow suit as soon as he kind of gives you a little space and gets back to his place and we'll just go around with Bob and follow suit. Thank you. Thank you for starting us out. Bob, you're next on, you're on deck as soon as she finishes hers. You can go all the way around the stage. Okay, thank you. So as we look at the continuum, we look at where you've placed the reds, what do we observe here? What do we observe here?
Where we put the green dots.
The red dots.
The red dots, yeah.
Red dots.
So that's today. And there's a little difference there, but I think one of the things I observe as I look at it is there's, the red dots tend to be to the left of the green dots. So I think we see that in a year that we aren't, we're anticipating some kind of growth. Now, not everyone sees the same level of growth. So that's, and that's a perception thing and that's maybe it's, you know, how you see the world, can we make a lot of progress or can we make a little progress? But the key is that everyone seems to think that there will be some progress is the way I would interpret that. Any other observations about where we've positioned ourselves?
It's interesting how we're split with the red dots being by sameness and then kind of another cluster of dots being by tolerance and fitting in. It's just, it's interesting.
And sometimes as I think of those, sometimes they almost sound similar and maybe it's just maybe the way I read the definition too, but you're right. No one said destructive, so we didn't, we bypassed that, but yes. There are two different clusters that are definitely there. You're absolutely right. And then the clusters around the green dots tend to be a little bit more similar, going from acceptance all the way to the beginning of valuing. Any other thoughts about this? I may take a picture of this and just share it in our follow-up letter, just share it and it would be interesting maybe in a year or so or once you get to the point of going through some of your phase fours and you kind of revisit this exercise and see, hmm, have we made some progress? Are we making movement? Good? With that, I think it's time for a, actually, an ending slide and then we're going to take a break. Is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay, no doubt about that. Okay. This last visual is one of my favorites. It's all about valuing and it points to that on the continuum, we're all trying to aspire to valuing. And what it says is some of you have probably seen the cultural iceberg before, if you look above the water line, you'll see that we tend to know about people's food, music, festivals, et cetera. But when you really, really get into valuing individuals or groups of people, you go below the water line and that's where you're looking at what are their values, what's their religious beliefs? What are their leadership styles? All of those things below the water line allow you to begin to actually value people in a district or whether it even be in your home, for instance, too. So I just ask you to just look at some of those things below the water line and that's where we really get into that valuing and we really begin to understand not only ourselves but others as well. With that, I think it's, we're long overdue a break, I would say. So why don't we take about, what do you think, about 10 minutes? Is that good or 10, 15 minutes? 10 minutes? Let's take a 10-minute break and we'll resume and we'll end with how we can make this a reality in your district.
So we are going to move into the third section, which is the how we can make educational equity a reality. So we've been through the why, the importance of doing this work. We've been to the what, exactly that means to do this work. So now we're going to shift gears into the how. I want to start off with a quote that you'll find in your book, ultimately you have to change attitudes, not by law, but by education. Education is powerful, goes back to, we don't know what we don't know. So this next section really dives deep into the how so that we can get to valuing on our continuum that you just looked at before and you placed the red dots and the green dots. We really want to move to closer to that valuing. So this how section is going to help you move to valuing because we all didn't choose where we lived when we were growing up, we didn't have that opportunity, we inherited this segregation within our society. So as we talk about moving to that valuing stage, it helps us to understand how can we make those connections across different ethnicities, across different races, across different cultures? How can we do that? What do we need to do? And with this next exercise, we'll have this retrospective of what exactly happened in our past, our present, and how we can make those connections so that we can go below that water line. Remember the iceberg? We want to get below the water line so that we can value our differences. So if you look on page 28 within your participant manual and we are on slide, let me see here, 38, you'll see two graphs depicted there. The first one is labeled past, the second one is labeled present. So you'll see that those different groupings and the colors, Asian American, Pacific Islander, Black African American, so on and so forth, are arbitrary. We could have come up with many different labels there, but we chose those because we thought that that was pretty widespread. So as I read a statement, this is what you're going to do. Focusing on the past chart, I will say a statement and you are going to place a check where that most reflects. For instance, for me, if I were to read the statement, what were your elementary teachers? Well, all of my elementary teachers were white, European American, all of them. So I would place my check there. Now, if you had some that were part of a multirace, Middle Eastern, you could place two checks. There's really no right or wrong with this, this is how you perceive it, how you want to place your checks. Any questions? So looking at the past, this is probably the same still. My parents were, so you would place your checks wherever they would go.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yes. My parents were. When I was between three and 18 years old, my best childhood friend was, and maybe you had a couple of different childhood friends, so you can place some, a few checks.
Three and what?
Three and 18. So as you were growing up. In elementary and high school, most of my teachers were. In elementary and high school, my principals were. In elementary and high school, most of my classmates were. I'm thinking about when you were growing up, up to age 18, most of my neighbors were. This is a tricky one. My human hero, maybe it's not a human or role model, real or fictional, growing up was. So who was your role model? Who was your hero when you were growing up? Okay, now we're going to move to that next grid, labeled present. So your next checks will go into the present grid. And again, I'm going to read a statement and you're going to place your check mark. Presently, the superintendent of education for the state of Illinois is, and if you don't know, it's Carmen Ayala, she is Puerto Rican. Presently, the superintendent of our school district is. Right now, the person I report to, so this is in your job, in your role, who do you report to? Today, my colleagues are mostly. My dentist is. My doctor is. Currently, my closest friend is. Right now, most of my neighbors are. The students and communities we serve are mostly. So typically I would have you move together and share these, but we're going to share them out as a group. If you look at your past check marks compared to your present, are there any differences? How are they different? In different boxes? Are your present in different boxes than your past or are they about the same?
They're about the same.
About the same for you, Bob?
Small difference.
Okay.
For me, in the past, I, every single check mark for me was For me, in the past, every single check mark for me was white. And in my present, there's still the majority of my check marks are white, but there are some other check marks in other boxes. So there is a difference between mine, too.
Okay, thank you for sharing that. That's how mine landed, too, Kim. Anyone else?
Mine was equal between Asian, Black, and White.
In both your past and present?
No, I'm talking about for the past and for present, it's Asian and White.
Okay, okay. Anyone else? If you think about your past, your present, do you have any control over those past, where those check marks landed?
No.
That's history, right? You have absolutely no control. What, Bob?
Not anymore.
Not anymore? That's exactly right. Your present, eh, a little bit, but you can really control what?
The future.
The future, yes. You can control those future check marks if you think about.
You can try.
You can make an effort to reach across those lines and get to know others from different backgrounds. And especially, as we look at the demographics that are changing within our communities, that we really do need to reach across those lines. And this is a good opportunity as board members to reach across the lines and get to know your constituents in ways that you perhaps have not known them in the past. So as we move through the rest of our section, you may think that, you know, you're doing this for your kids, right, for the students. You sit on a board, I would think, with the best intention of serving your students in the best way that you can. But there's something that gets in the way. And we need to acknowledge this so that we can manage it. And that is biases. How many of you have heard of the word bias before? How many of you have biases? Yes, we all have biases. We need to acknowledge them. The big thing is, is we need to manage our biases. So this next how section is really getting into the understanding of biases and then acknowledging them and managing them. So where do they come from? Well, as you're sitting here in your chair, your brain is absorbing so much that's going on around. The lights that are glaring down on us, how hard the seat is, how tired we are, what other things that are going on. All of this is in your brain right now. Everything is being absorbed as you are sitting here right now. Your brain processes more than what you're actually seeing and attending to. It's taking in a lot. That's how we're wired. So what happens is, a lot of information that we're attending to, it gets stored into our unconsciousness, so that we don't even know it's there, taking in all this information on a day-in and day-out basis. So as we think about that and the world we live in, we're just soaked, just soaked in so many biases. And this is what this next section deals with, is that we need to understand what those biases are and then need to manage them. So one type of bias that comes across in education is confirmation bias. That bias is that when we have different groups of students within the classroom, within our educational environment, we see students as a high potential, performing as a high performer. And then we might have a different group as low potential and low performer. Confirmation bias comes into play whenever we see the high potential, high performer student make the same mistake that a low potential, low performer student would have. Our brain tells us that that mistake didn't happen, that that student is still a high performer. Conversely, the other way happens also. The low potential, low performer student may perform as the high potential, just like the high potential may make the mistake. And we confirm that it is a low, or still a high performer. That low potential, low performer is performing as the high performer. But our confirmation bias, that stereotype, tells us that that didn't happen, that it didn't occur. And there have been studies that have confirmed this confirmation bias, I play on words there from my part. There was a study that was completed by Hoyan Sabatucha Churn, and the citing is in your participant manual on page 30. So what they found in this study was that consistent with stereotypes of race and academic abilities, both math and English students were more likely to perceive their class as too difficult for students of color when compared to white students, even after controlling for standardized test scores, homework completion, and a host of other factors. So those teachers, if we were to ask them, without the knowledge of the study that was conducted, if we were to ask them, do you think that they would have said that they have this confirmation bias? Most likely, no. They didn't understand that they had a bias. They didn't know that they had this preconceived idea of how students were going to perform. Through the study, this was evident of the confirmation bias. And that's why it's so important that we recognize the biases and manage the biases. And that bias that came into play there is that unconscious bias that has been soaked and soaked into them. So again, we need to manage it. We need to recognize it and manage it as we move through to become a culturally responsive organization. So real brief, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about another study, an MIT study which sent out resumes. Resumes with, this is, I'm sorry, we're on slide 45. Resumes were sent out. And half the resumes had white-sounding names, half the resumes had black-sounding names. The black-sounding names received 50% less callbacks. Now, again, do you think those higher hiring managers, then everything else was controlled for. The only thing that changed on those resumes were the names. Do you think those hiring managers realized they had the bias? Again, it was unconscious bias came into play with the callbacks. So again, we have to manage them. So it's not that biases are intentionally to hurt others because we don't know that we have them. And that's why it's so important that we recognize those biases and learn how to manage them. And it takes the part of ourselves, and oftentimes, and we'll get to this in a little bit, the help of others to help us manage those biases, too, as we become into the how skills and how we can manage those biases whenever we get to that section. The hiring process. Research has shown that students who have people that look like them in the classroom, they do better. If you have an African-American student with an African-American teacher, they're more likely to come to school. They identify with that role model. The scores increase, so discipline decreases. They improve better with standardized tests. They are more likely to go on to college. So it's so important that we have a diverse staff. I'm going to briefly talk about this diverse staffing. And if we look at this particular example, we have the requirements for the job. A 75 on the test, two years' experience, and a BA. And then we have three candidates there. And you'll see they're 76 on the test, two years' experience, MBA. The next one has a 75 on the test, a nine-years' experience, and a BA. I'm sorry, the first one had an MBA. The third candidate has a 79 on the test, two years' experience, and a BA. So they all met the 75 on the test, the two years' experience, and the BA. Those are the requirements for the job. Agreed? They all met those requirements. Who is the best candidate, then? If you think it's the first one, raise your hand. If you think it's the second candidate, raise your hand.
I like the second.
You'd say the second one?
Yeah.
Okay. How about the third candidate? Anybody like the third candidate? Ed, you like the third candidate? Kim, you like the third candidate?
I feel very torn.
Very torn between them? This example is to point out that if you said, for instance, the first one, I know none of you did say the first one, but if you wanted the first candidate to be hired for the job, what would you value?
BA.
Education, right? If you wanted the second one, what would you value?
Experience.
Experience, right? Third one, what would you value?
Test score.
The test score. And just like that, that's a bias, because you had a preferential for one of those areas.
Can I, the attractiveness of the third option for me is not the test score. For me, it is indicating two years of experience, a fresh perspective.
Ah, good point.
Because to me, that's looking at somebody who's, you know, either younger, a new person into the profession, which would mean a fresh perspective. That was the attractive.
Different set of eyes. Gotcha. Okay, here I go. So as you are board members, you want that diverse staff. And I know that you don't hire your staff, but I do want to emphasize the importance of a diverse staff. And there are ways that you can do that. And if you look in your book on page 31, there is what we call the selection model. It's the must and the wants. And the takeaway here for you is that everyone that you hire must pass through the must section. That's the must. They must pass through that must section. So if you think back to our example, 75 on a test, two years' experience, a BA, that was the must. That was the requirements for the job. That second part is the want, you know, what additional, what additionally can they bring to the organization? I was an administrator at a preschool. So for my preschool, I had a diverse staff. I had an ethnically diverse staff of all women. If a man would have walked through my door, that would meet all the must criteria, that would have been a great enhancement to my staff, to have a male teacher in the classroom for my students. So do you see how it, the diversity of staff is having what you don't have? That's what we talk about of diversified staff, is having what you don't have representative. Does that all make sense? And that's how, you want to make sure that everybody passes through the must section, the requirements of the job, so that everybody walking through your halls knows that they are important and they belong, because they pass through the must section. And they are enhancing the organization based upon a different dimension. Makes sense? Any questions? Page 47 in your book talks about how to get to a diversified staff. Gives you some suggestions on that. Again, as board members, you're not the ones that are hiring your staff. You leave that up to the superintendent. But there are some good ideas there. And talks about also the importance of diverse staffing, because we know that we need to have representation for our students to feel comfortable in your environment. So again, on slide 51 also, I've already talked about this, you know, the importance of having a diverse staff for your students, how it increases academic performance, et So this next section has to do with insider outsiders, inclusive behaviors, exclusive behaviors. So this really gets into the how in the organization you can become an inclusive environment. If you see over here behind Kim, there's a sign that says, "Learn how to be comfortable with discomfort." Because as we take on exclusive behaviors, those are behaviors that are not welcoming in our environment, it can be a little uncomfortable. And it can cause some discomfort for people. But we're going to teach you some ways on how to go about this in a non-threatening way. So if you look at this in your manual or on the screen, we're on slide 53, or in the participant manual, it's page 30, it says 31 there, but that's 33.
33.
It's actually 33. So we need to correct that. If you, I always call it a flower. So ideally, you're trying to get to the center of that flower, the inclusive behavior. So every inclusive behavior, there's an exclusive behavior. And conversely, every exclusive behavior has an inclusive behavior. So I'm going to start with that kind of a goldie color and move around clockwise on the flower. So that first one is, the exclusive behavior is avoiding contact, where the inclusive behavior is making the mutual contact. So here, we're talking about reaching across ethnic, racial lines and getting to know people. You know, my neighborhood is becoming more diverse. And as I see more diversity coming into my neighborhood, I'm sure to go and introduce myself to my new neighbors to make sure that they feel welcome, to introduce myself, let them know that I'm around should they need anything at any point in time. And offering them the satisfaction or the comfort in knowing that, you know, I'm a neighbor, give them my cellphone number if they should see something or need anything. I've been a resident for 20-some years and would be more than willing to help guide them through different areas if they needed help in any such fashion. So again, making those contacts, reaching across the line. That second, or the bluish color is valuing individual differences or denying differences. I have a biracial nephew. And for a long time, I saw him as my white nephew. I didn't acknowledge, I didn't value his biracialness. You know, I had the response that, or maybe not the response, but just kind of the attitude of being colorblind. But recognizing and appreciating his differences made me value him more and became more color brave for myself. So we have to value the differences and not deny them. So that's that purple petal. That next kind of, I don't know, bottom one, I don't know the color, but kind of a greenish color. Accepting responsibility or blaming others or the organization. So I heard a lot of this through the summer. I don't know if you heard it, but, you know, it's the media's fault. If the media just wouldn't sensationalize everything, we wouldn't be where we're at in this country, you know, with demonstrations and all of that was going on. I heard a lot of that. But you know what? That goes back to the very first historical perspective that we took. We really need to acknowledge how we are in this country based upon the construction of race and the stereotypes, all that history. We need to come to terms with that, acknowledge it, so that we can accept the responsibility. We need to come to terms with that, acknowledge it, so that we can accept the responsibility.
Kudos to Julie Roden for being able to say that now.
... and they can help me out. So Sandra and I both have learned so much from our own children. It's been a great journey.
This is funny to me because I'm a millennial, so it's weird to hear this conversation. I'm just under the line.
So that's whenever you hear something, that's whenever you're going to give some feedback, some challenging feedback to another individual. The next skill set would be receiving challenging feedback. Now this one is whenever someone is approaching you to give you feedback on something you may have done or said. So again, it's a four-step process. First thing you're going to do is you want to understand the concern. You want to understand where this person is coming from. And you're going to ask them to tell me more. Quite frankly, you're probably going to be caught off guard and be a little shocked. So you're going to, you're going to have to group yourself a little bit. And they're also, they may be upset and they might be throwing everything at you, coming at you with a full force. So you're going to have to say, "Tell me more. What I heard you say is..." And as they're throwing everything at you, say, "What is the most important to you? What is the most important thing that I can do for you? What is it?" Because you're not, you're probably not going to be able to do all 10 of them. And remember, they're going to be upset. And then you want to come up with a resolution of, "Here's what I'm able to do." So again, four steps. Practice helps. And if there's one key takeaway from this, one key takeaway, it's three words. Tell me more. The clicker is not responding here. There we go. Sandra, would you like to practice with me? Oh, we only have the one, is that... So we have a STEM here that we have created to practice with. And we have written it down. And I'm ready.
Do only those who play up to you get ahead around here.
Sandra, could you tell me more about what you're saying?
I said, only those people who you really like get ahead around here.
So what I'm hearing you say is that the people I like around here get ahead?
Yes. Only your people get ahead.
Okay. So what's important to you is that you see all people are treated fairly, not just those that are my people that I like?
Yeah, that would be a good start.
So here's what I'm able to do. Whenever there are positions open within the company, I'll be sure that those are posted so that everyone can have access to those. Would that help?
We'll see.
Okay. Thank you. So just an example, and that's a pretty light one to do. Any questions on either aspect of those, giving feedback or receiving feedback? Again, the idea is to become more inclusive within the organization so that you can move to being a more valuing and color brave organization on a continuum.
A lot of it is assertive communication.
It is.
To tell what boils down to. And you know, some of the scenarios and what you've gone through is basically a counseling skill.
Yes.
Because if you're, you know, a licensed counselor, a LCPC, LPC, you're, that's what you're asking your clients and trying to get out of them and to commit.
Yep. You're exactly right on it. This is the same, that if you're in that business, you would know it.
And you try to teach people to be assertive and get their needs and wants across and what are your expectations and what are you looking for someone else to do or what needs to be done?
It's almost de-escalating. You can use a whole counselor, you're angry, sometimes you're aggressive. So the passing of the...
And a key takeaway, you know, whenever you're receiving the feedback, you as a person, you know, you want to be sure, try not to take it personally, you know? Try to see it as a growth opportunity to build as an organization, to build as a person. And that it's an educatable moment, you know? And again, de-escalation is going to be important. And that's where those three words really come into play is tell me more, tell me more to help de-escalate in the moment. Okay.
This is coming, grabbing up, coming to the end. If you would, please, in your manual, turn to page 37. So we have gone through quite a bit today. We've talked about an action plan, I mean, we've talked about personal action steps that you can take. We've talked about some organizational action steps. So I'd like you to look at step number one, it says, "Create one or two personal items that you will commit to implementing during the next two weeks." This is personal, personal. And to do that, you may want to pull out that cultural assessment that we did at the very, very beginning of the day. That may kind of help remind you of some of the things that we've talked about. Or you may want to go and look through the book. In step number two, I'd like you to capture below your suggestions for next steps for your Board of Education. So one is personal, what are some things that you might want to commit in your personal effort journey? Step number two, what are some suggestions for things for this particular Board of Education? So I'm going to give you a few minutes to do that, maybe two or three minutes to just kind of think through that. And would you please capture them on this page, 37?
Okay. Would anyone like to share a personal...
Sorry, thank you. Would anyone like to share a personal action plan that you may have identified in step number one? Anything? What do you feel on that?
All right. Um, I'll make sure for step one. Create personally a book list for the next year. Gordon mentioned a title I'd like to check out, but there are other resources that I know of that I would like to read more. And I love to read, so that's something I'd like to do. And the second one would be follow-ups with my equity subcommittee. We have an upcoming meeting and, you know, solicit feedback from all of the voices in that subcommittee that I'm running.
And actually, when you said the resource list, I think there's a resource list that's provided in your book. And if not, can I just follow up with another team? I will share with you some additional resources if you have other wonders there.
That would be welcome. Thank you.
That might come across as data in opposition that... embrace being part of a culture. And they're not necessarily advocating for their own ethnic or cultural identity or they're not, you know, fitting within what we might have considered boxes for a check. They want to assimilate. And when you have individuals within the system that want to embrace a larger current culture, does that do anything to our equity effort?
When you say assimilate, please define that for me so I understand.
Well, if you have, let's take a family that might have migrated here, they're first-generation immigrants, they will, you know, their priority is to make sure that their child gets an education. They're doing that. And they basically want to keep their head under the radar. They don't maybe want to be identified. They just want to kind of go with the flow. They don't want to stand out. But yet, everything we're doing is trying to celebrate and bring them out and, you know, so there's almost like a clash of priorities there.
And I'm sure a lot of people have different responses. One of my responses to that is, in your equity audit, I would want to hear those voices.
Assuming we can get them.
And yes. And we have to be assertive in trying to get and hear their voices and hear, is that what they want? Is assimilation what they are saying they want? So I would want to listen to their voices because we may think that it's assimilation, but we want to validate that through the equity audits to make sure we're understanding what it is.
So if we're getting that data, you know, not assuming that that's the data we're getting, but we're getting that data back, does that do anything to impact where we are as far as being the red dot on that sameness metric versus trying to push them into sort of that celebration metric?
Right. I think once you get the information back, I think that does inform exactly what your next steps are. So I would agree with that. But get that data and make sure that we're validating what maybe our assumptions are. And that's what I, that's my response to what you say. But you're right, the data will inform us, but we don't want to make sure, we want to make sure we're not speaking for them, that we're letting their voices be completely...
Right. Because even though we're placing dots on a board, that's our opinion of how our community is. It may not necessarily align with what the feedback from the community is. So... So when I hear, let's move the bar, that's my goal, I'm just kind of wondering, you know, are we maybe jumping the gun?
So what's your response to his question, though? Because it sounds like you answered not the question that he asked. He is saying, the assumption is, it's validated. That's what they want. And he's asking, okay, now what? It doesn't align with what the board's
Thumbing the whole thing. And I guess
Is that right, Pete? Am I?
Yeah, because we're talking about what, what are our next steps, but we don't have the data to inform what our next steps are. And then Steve's looking at a chart where it was just on our own biases of seven or six people here tonight.
What we want.
Right. So I just want to make sure I'm not forcing something down the throats of our community. And, you know, and again, there are some members of our community that are more sensitive. And when you talk to them, you know, the students say, hey, my mom and dad go to work, I do all of this on my own. They, they're the first child in their, their family to get a high school diploma. You know, there's very sensitive
Sure.
Things beyond just what we perceive their cultures to be, but internally within their home and how they're working.
And I don't know if you have something else to say, but I still would answer it similarly. And maybe, Bob, you take exception to how I'm answering it, but I would still say, I want to hear that from them, is what I was trying to say. I would like to hear that from them. And you're right, their perceptions are here, our perceptions are here, right? And we don't want to shove any of our perceptions down there. I hear exactly what you're saying. But let's see what the data says. And I think the data will lead you. And anytime people have gone through the equity audits, you'll hear leaders say, the data took me to a place where we needed to be in our district. Those voices.
Yes, in that audit, they'll keep on repeating that come across that will then need to be addressed through those timelines, those action plans, those goals, what do we type in history? And that's really where this research and that stuff will come about. And you want to make sure that you have all the processes you infer within the district. And you want to make sure that you have those home change services, focus services, surveys, all those things so that you can get to the voices, give everyone opportunity.
I mean, to me, sorry, um, didn't mean to interrupt. I, I take issue with the premise because when I'm thinking about, you know, I'm not interested as a board, not that it wouldn't even be possible, it's not part of our job, but I'm not interested in the board in mandating every student whose family chooses Hispanic somewhere on an enrollment or demographic form for data collection then has to join the Hispanic club, you know? I'm not interested in mandating, um, the, the way that, you know, or policing someone's expression of their ethnic or racial identity or cultural identity in any way. And I don't think that's what any of us have suggested to do, nor is there any indication of that in the plan. So what I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about the fact that we're, we're really trying to create space for diverse voices, but we're not mandating what those voices say. We're creating more space for more voices. And then, you know, I'm thinking about your hypothetical example of a first generation immigrant family who's trying to assimilate. I don't really see what that has to do with, for example, uh, asking our superintendent to include diverse hiring practices in their annual goals. And then following up to see whether those, um, goals were met.
But when I'm looking more at, at a staff training level, if we provide the direction to start implementing training and, and as was presented here, more, more continued education, getting our staff trained, putting our, our dollars behind the initiatives, you know, now you're talking about teachers in a classroom doing an exercise similar to what we're doing where they're trying to get to know, you know, um, specific cultural backgrounds and understanding these students and calling attention to students that may not necessarily want that attention, differentiating them from their peers or their classmates. So when you're looking at the end user, who's our students, and how we implement equity in the classroom, that's what I'm envisioning some of this. And, and that's basically the examples that were provided here, are examples that we would almost encourage in our classrooms. And so I'm just logically running this through, you know, empathetically, as a student, how would I perceive this if, you know, everything I'm doing is to, you know, stay under the radar, fit in, and now I'm being asked to kind of step out of that comfort zone and, and celebrate, if you will, which is the metric on the bar chart?
No, I, I understand. What I'm saying is that I would expect any basic component of any decent professional development program that we're talking about would begin with the right to pass. And perhaps because we're all adults, that wasn't a thing that our trainers felt necessi, you know, necessary to point out from the beginning. I didn't feel like I had to answer any question that was posed to me tonight. I feel that I could have passed at any time. And that same right to pass would be granted to any student. I mean, um, and that, that's, that's basic education. I would, I would, I would go so far as to say that any person coming out of a college with a bachelor's degree in education would have learned that over and over again. And if, if a professional, if one of our staff members tried to mandate that kind of participation rather than, you know, if they were implementing a similar sort of exercise, which Dr. Small already said is not appropriate for all classes, no, you know, um, thus being individual discretion of the teacher, again, being something that as a board, we don't necessarily want to stick our finger in, it's not really our, part of our governance. But at the same time, uh, you know, previously, as part of the equity plan, one of the key factors that was listed here would be including on performance reviews of staff equity objectives. And this, to me, would be an ideal thing that could perhaps be measured. So, you know, do you respect a student's right to pass? Which to me is a non-negotiable thing.
No, I, I don't disagree. It's just when you're in a classroom environment, it's not just the student-teacher interface with the right to pass, it's a whole environment of, of your peer group. And we all know that not all peer groups are equal.
Of course.
And some, you know, your friend may not respect your right to pass the same as maybe your teacher or instructor or college-educated professor might. So, you know, when you introduce these things into an environment, you, there's, there is some control by the teacher and management by the teacher, but there is also that introduction into the peer group. And so now you, you, you may pass, but then the rest of the class may be asking, well, why are you passing? Are you adopted? What's going on? You know, and then it just creates more, you know, burden for the individual. And it's, it may be more minutia than we need to get into here. It's just as we look at a plan of action with direction to administration for implementation, these are things that are crossing my mind.
Of course, of course. And I guess I'm just saying, from a person who has been in the classroom, having to collect demographic data and having sensitive conversations around these very identities, there's a lot of educational practice and theory that goes into managing that situation in a classroom. And to me, I have faith in our superintendent and then the administrators that she hires to make sure that our staff on an individual level are directed to manage that situation properly. And if they did not, if they made students uncomfortable and mandated participation in something like this, or gave them undue attention when they've set a boundary, you know, I would, I would be just as disappointed as I, as I suspect you would be. Because that's not how, that's not an experience I want any one of our students to have. I wouldn't support that either. So I'm, I guess I'm just saying, I trust, I trust research to kind of drive the ship to make sure that that doesn't happen.
And, and again, my, my whole question basically was the fact that not everybody may want to participate
Of course.
In identifying themselves within the equity lens that we're trying to portray.
Very true.
So what do we do with the, either the people who choose not to be part of that lens? Is it still our responsibility as the Board of Education to bring them into a fold for what our overall goal is? Or is it to, is it to respect their right to not participate or identify within the equity lens? So now we have that issue of, you know, how do we get to our goals if we want to create a culture within the buildings, but yet there's individuals that may not want to adopt that culture as well? So those are the thoughts that I'm going, from a strategic perspective. And, and how does that impact our data?
I would add something to that, um, listening to the, to the conversation here. I think that is getting into the nitty-gritty of, of the classroom that we probably shouldn't be part of, um, at this moment. But I think it deals with the relationship that each teacher develops with their class. And I don't think, um, you know, finding out about the ethnic background or the cultures of the student kind of happens, um, you know, in one day, just at one time. It's, you get to learn about the student, just as we make friends and we, at our workplace, you build up a relationship with people and that's how you get to know them. And I think that's how the class develops, um, a unity and a cohesiveness to be a really good class and work with, with the teacher. So I think that that's important, is the relationship. And it's going to be different, how each teacher builds that relationship, I would imagine. They develop a foundation of, of, that they need to be doing that and then
Right.
They have, they have to do that.
But doesn't our school culture also have to spread between the classmates? It's not just
Yeah, and you're absolutely right.
Right, it's not just teacher to student, but it's within the peers. So we're looking at, you know, establishing a culture, right? And, and I, I understand how we can implement that from the teachers down to the students, but I'm still trying to wrap my head around, how do we, how do we do that within the students?
And I think that's building that relationship within that, within each classroom that, that students in. And the teacher has control over that, I believe, because, you know, we want to make sure that there's not bullying going around, or a student doesn't feel bad about having to share something. So I think there's a lot of parts that, that go into that. But you're absolutely right, because, um, you know, kids have, um, some different concepts and, and how they see themselves, just like we did, and how others see them. And they're hesitant to say something because it may not make them look good. And everything, you know, with, with teenagers, it's about, you know, fitting in and looking good.
Pete, I hear what you're saying completely. And, and trying to get your, your arms around, your head around actionable items and steps and, and what that will do, you know, the impact of it perhaps. Um, I think the equity initiative that's underway right now, which I think we're in the relatively early steps of, is going to give us the, the data, as Sandra had said, to help us identify what actions we should take.
Right, but the whole, the whole question here is exactly that. It's capture below your suggestions for the next steps of this group.
Well, well, that's, that's us as a, as a school board
Right.
Versus us as a school district. And I think right now, the initiative we have underway in the subcommittees and the data gathering and the, the community engagement and the diversity even of the subcommittees with representation from the students, the staff, the teachers, the school board, et cetera, is going to help us to get that data, then analyze that data and start identifying some steps. With regards to the students who may not want to be celebrated, so to speak, what I think from my early, early perception, and it's my perception, not that of the, the, the initiative and the report that we're going to see in the spring, is that we allow the students and allow the staff to be celebrated, but not force them to be celebrated, especially on an individual basis. But create a culture where there's a comfort level for those who want to and a comfort level for those who may not want to. And, and have that diversity and availability for them. But we'll see, I, I think we're still some months away from, from having that information to then be able to make those decisions.
Yeah, but I don't think this, this is something that's not going to happen overnight or even a year.
Sorry, I answered your question.
To develop, and you're probably going to have to have this equity thing going on either annually or every two years, just to see what you can do to develop it even further on the thing.
And we may, we may end up with some outcome from the initiative and the data and the report that we get, that then there's a, a plan. Right, and it, and it may be, you know, this year we want to do X, and next year we want to do X, and here's a, you know, a five-year strategic plan or whatever we put in place around the results of the information that we're gathering.
What each one of the board members has referenced is, I'm going back to your systemic approach to achieving educational equity, the journey. And they're referencing the plan that they've already supported and put in place. So when you talk about the board's next steps, certainly it is getting that feedback and hearing those voices and understanding not only their perceptions, but why, which is also important. Why does a, um, a group of stakeholders or individuals feel that a certain way? And how can we support that and, and enhance the success that they need? That will come out of our audit. And that is truly the next step that we're right on the edge of stepping into, which will drive all the other pieces that will come to this board to understand and support the plan, which will be a multi-year plan. I predict that very much so.
And I appreciate, um, I appreciate your concern because at the, at the heart of what I hear you saying is, you're concerned about those individual students. And every individual student is not at the same place in their journey and all too. And I would feel 100% confident that that kind of consideration would be taken into consideration as we start looking at the plans that come as a result. So you're absolutely right to feel exactly what you should feel. And if you're right, exactly what you should be. And so right now, we're still at the point of getting to the data, let's see what the people are saying, let's see what each student group, each staff group is saying, and let then that will determine. And at that point, question the report, you know, why did this person take, why, you know, that stuff, those why questions, that are very good for board members to engage in. So thank you very much. And please don't believe me, develop the conversation, that was a good conversation that needed to be answered. I appreciate your question. Okay, so it sounds like the next step is really that audit and hearing those voices, listening to the voices, um, understanding, and then there will be some kind of formal presentation that we presented to you at the table where you can ask questions. What's going on? Why would we decide this? Have we taken into consideration each of the children because we want to value and respect each individual child in the district? That's what that equity school district is about. Okay, what I have is I'll, I'll provide a resource list for you, provide some information on joint annual conference, or the summit if you don't have that. Um, there's some, um, things that are coming from some of the subcommittees, it seems like. Um, um, the, these two are connected. Equity, equity committee report, I think is what we're really, really working, um, expecting and those recommendations that will come from there. And consider the constraints and limitations, and I'm sure that'll be part of the equity committee report. You know, we've got some financial constraints, or as Ed said, you know, maybe we have part eight, phase one, phase two, phase three, whatever, what are the constraints? And at the board, um, Steve said, move that to evaluate on the continuum. So that's as a board team he's talking about, not even talking about the entire district. At this board here, that's one of his desires is to see you all move to the value on the continuum. Anything else? Are we ready to proceed on? Are we ready to go home? When we're deploying, including with, um, remember there, the book, if anybody would like to see it. So there are some additional resources on, by this presenting that you will see, that you may want to be, um, clear on. One of the things, kind of going to what Steve was saying, you know, the right side that I would be that comfortable with, not the board, all that they give you, like sticking everything, they want to use you as a, as a team. Running the way that you can, hopefully, just want to be your other board members and how to make your goal, that the board can, that specifically, that is the goal in this sort of district as a whole. Well, I think they say the equity here to, to the card. I'd like for you all to just, as I said, to do this, but you can just go off and move. And just something we appreciate about our conversation, it can be something applied to some of the, to a lot of things that we've been living in that kind of a common, a last, with, 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 anything that you'd like to do, that's kind of how we, for our team together.
Sure. Uh, I think we found something else where I think everyone's in agreement. We all support this initiative.
Great. That's amazing. That's, that's awesome. Are we going to have some hiccups as to how we get there? Of course, we're going to have some, you know, we'll, we'll learn a little bit more, but I think the fact that you're all on the same page right now, as far as next steps is good. Anna, what about you?
I liked the cultural iceberg because there were some things I didn't think about. You know, we looked at, at the surface, and those are all things that we kind of relate to, the, you know, the performing arts, the food, the music, and so on, but then really taking a deeper look at, you know, the, the nature of friendships, values, because different cultures have different values, their learning styles, um, views on raising children, concept of fairness. I think these, these are important things to really take a look at. I, I liked the iceberg.
Great, thank you. Pete?
Um, I appreciate that we can have this discussion in an open and transparent manner, and whoever's watching at home on Zoom can follow along and know exactly what it is we're doing.
And may I also suggest, in line with what he said, make sure your community knows about your efforts as a board, that you're working on this. Make sure you share that. I mean, yes, there's some people that are going to look at it streaming, but, but take a little time maybe and share at an upcoming meeting, or in the newsletter, or on the website, that you all invest the time and you are very interested in this work, and you're working together to bring about more equitable school districts. So, thank you.
To be honest, I really enjoyed learning a little something new about everybody here, because I'm new on the board. So I had no idea that Ms. Klinkowitz has been on the board for 23 years, and that's, that's astonishing to me. So I just really liked learning something new about everybody.
Continue that.
It's amazing.
Okay, thank you. Steve? To your point, Sandra, a couple things. One is, um, appreciative that, that we as a board are here together to learn more about each other, more about, um, the importance of this information. And it was really, um, pleasing to me to know the, um, the process that we're working through here in our school district under Dr. Small, and, and that we seem to be on a, on a good path, um, around this initiative and this awareness, and, um, and this, this way that we're working on, on equity and inclusion as a school district. So that was very, very pleasing to me to see that we're, we're following the, the training that we got tonight. Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
I just loved the training we had tonight, you know. I think in some respects, us as a board don't really talk about a common goal like this, and I think everybody's input was interesting, and I think everybody bought something different to this, to this discussion. I think we're off at a good start at home.
Thank you.
Certainly, the topic is an extremely valuable one, uh, but personally, it was very beneficial for me to be in this type of environment with the board. That is a very different type of setting for all of us to be together, and I truly appreciate the voices that I heard. It gave me, um, a better understanding of the board.
And I just have to say, I appreciate your candor, each one of you. And I, I really appreciate, as I think someone said, the diversity of opinions, the diversity of perspective, diversity of heritage and, and with, you know, what you bring to the table. And I appreciated the questions, um, you know, even skepticism at some point, I think that's part of your work. I think we're all on our own individual journeys, but together, you have an organizational journey, because you're one of those two alone in this district, um, and, and, so I thank you and I appreciate your candor, to be, and your hard work.
I would, I would just say, at all, as far as that, but also just appreciative of your time, dedication coming out tonight, and that you were using time to learn about this topic, and the, the commitment that you have to yourself, to start, and to speak, and to, 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 to the world. And I think you really do, and I
And thank you to all the support people, Kathy, and Sally, and Vinnie, and whoever's up there. All of the people, all of you all were just so wonderful, and we so appreciate all of the support and help, and, and thank you so much for including us.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you deserve an applause.
Thank you.
All right, um, that concludes the presentation. We just have our couple motions before we adjourn then. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the notice of resignation of David O'Connor. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Abstain.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye.
We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education adopt a resolution authorizing notice to remedy and five-day suspension without pay for Michael Murphy, and that such notice be provided to the employee by the Secretary of the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Abstain.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye.
And if there's nothing further, we are adjourned.